Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, September 26, 2023. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mrs. Kail Smith. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavell.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Reverend Burgess Protem. Members present.
All right, if you stand with me, face the flag, and recite the Pledge of Allegiance in unison, and then a moment of silence, or meditation, or prayer, depending on your choice.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there such a motion?
No motion.
Your second.
Second.
All those in favor who sent five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. It is amended. The next order of business is proclamation. We have none to be presented. We do have one to be read into the record from Ms. Strasburger.
Councilperson Strasburger presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare September 16, 2023, to be Massa Amini Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion? Your second.
Second.
All those in favor who sent five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. The proclamations are approved. The next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council states that comments are, thank you, are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before council. Profanity will not be permitted. When you are called to speak, please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes in which to speak. Our first registered speaker is Gregory, uh, Nurese. Is Gregory online? Gregory, are you with us? Seeing no Gregory, we'll move on. Our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller, floor is yours.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Hoover. Uh, Bouja, Nigeria. Global Intelligence Society, U.S., candidate for President 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. Local neighborhood VV vote-by-voter verification for whom, and uncensored freedom of speech are key to what I do. I'm the founder and president of the New York and Pennsylvania Center Corporation, Center for Global Studies International, Interdisciplinary. The Global Intelligence Society is the policy wing. I'm 1998, 1999, entity 2A31602 in Pennsylvania. The legislature later proposer of and legis cognitive of Lex is law and court legal actions. Previous RLM, U.S. Supreme Court contacts on the legality of the vote 2016 and 2020. A Pittsburgh City Council concern shared by local councils across the United States is the vote. The United States Supreme Court, Citizens Brief 2023, Chief Justice Roberts and Court from RLM. Counties across the United States, and so the Pennsylvania Allegheny County Election Division, do not permit a citizen to determine if his or her vote has been lost or misapplied via vote-by-voter verification for whom, VVVFW. I and the Global Intelligence Society take the following positions to the U.S. Supreme Court, Sershi Yorari. One, that the vote is the core expression of U.S. Constitution Amendment, one, freedom of speech. Two, that blocking citizen VVVFW violates the citizen's freedom of speech and rips the central core of control of the vote from the people. Three, that this VVVFW blocking and FS deprivation is unconstitutional. Four, that the USC should necessarily issue an emergency order to require VVVFW in all states of the United States in the 2024 election for president. Five, that a U.S. National Universal Paper Ballot is necessary to secure the vote, eliminating the high probability of computer and AI vote recording system manipulation. And six, that non-party, non-political party neighborhood election bodies should allow the individual citizen in the neighborhood to be able to determine whether his vote has been misapplied or lost.
Our next registered speaker is Kent Bay. Mr. Bay.
Peace. Good morning, Council. My name is Kent Bay. I'm a Welsh-American, citizen of the USA, military veteran, third generation, beginning with my grandfather, who lived with his family in the Hill District. I'm the founder of the Project Love Coalition. Our mission is to advocate on behalf of veterans and their families in areas of housing, workforce development, and community building. The Project Love Coalition has been attempting to access resources from the city for a while now without any success. We'd like to know, will we be able to get any support from the city government? We are currently engaged in a project known as the American Veterans Agri Housing Critical Development Project. For nearly seven years, Project Love Coalition has been trying to complete a small project to provide housing to veterans in crisis, but efforts have been denied or delayed. We started this project goal many years ago when the White House, under the Obama administration, sent a challenge to end veteran homelessness to all mayors across the nation in every city. Our request is, can we get this city to provide us with some support in our efforts to help veterans and their families? We definitely bring this up in view of the recent incident involving Mr. William Hardison, who was recently murdered by a 47 Pittsburgh police, 12 Allegheny County officers, 16 Allegheny County deputies SWAT for peacefully refusing to accept a piece of paper in the form of an eviction notice to vacate him from his family's home where he was paying rent. Lot of these things are 100% avoidable. Project Love Coalition has been here trying to help veterans and their families. We'd like to know, is the city government going to work with us? In closing, we follow all the rules. We ask for help and put our trust in a system that does not take us seriously and continues to oppress us based on technicalities or petty indifference. We never thought we would, we were asking for too much. We thought that we were asking for the things available to any true American citizen that would enable us to do what is right and good for all. Thank you.
Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullins. Naomi.
Here. I honor my husband, who is a true City of Pittsburgh servant of the public. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. Now it has become apparent that our borders are being violated with encroaching invaders. Money sent to Ukraine instead of helping our citizens in Hawaii who were burnt out and many killed. Why should we pay tax without representation? In the Bon Air neighborhood, we are being threatened with a detrimental building deteriorating and costing taxpayers thousands per month. We say no to anything except a green space to replace the school buildings. Extremism in hallways and crime is not acceptable to Bon Air residents. We, the people of Bon Air, are the real stakeholders. We have paid our mortgages, taxes, and voted. We have shown up at the town hall meetings to give a resounding no to developing the building. We have signed a petition to say we want a green space, not a building. We have property value and quality of life to protect. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. This was read at my husband's funeral, written by Battalion Chief Douglas Maraskovich. Retired Deputy Fire Chief Mike Mullin touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising set into a sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew less of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable, regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Michael J. Mullin lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. A first responder memorial green space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank
Our next registered speaker is Deacon George.
My name is Deacon George. I am the pastor at Pleasant Hill Bible Church in Bedford, Pennsylvania. I'm a graduate of the Master's University Santa Clarita, California. On September 12, this council voted to claim Pittsburgh as a sanctuary city for gender-affirming care, despite logic, scientific data, and conscience. Such a decision will have a far-reaching effect not only in our region but for generations to come. Fifteen years ago and prior to my conversion to Jesus Christ, I was arrested in Pittsburgh, just south of Pittsburgh, for driving while under the influence of alcohol. I believe this city and its police officers were used as servants of God to carry out the just weight of the law to bear upon poor and sinful decisions. Driving while intoxicated is sinful because of an objective, logical standard of truth that exists outside of mankind. This city has now divorced itself from a standard, the standard of God's moral law, the Word of God, for a subjective standard of populous utility and irrationality. Statistics also prove that it is more deadly to be in the womb in Pittsburgh than in a car operated by someone under the influence. Magistrates are called to uphold the law, which is based on a standard above the city, namely God Himself. It is irrational to abandon the scientific reality of only two created genders, male and female. How long will you be limping between two opinions? If Yahweh is God, serve Him. If Baal, serve Him. We are seeing that it is encouraged for people to kill their own children and thou to encourage the taking of drugs that will harm them for the rest of their lives. Consider if Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, were to become a DUI-affirming sanctuary city, where anyone was welcome to receive the alcohol needs that they so desperately need or seek, a city where alcoholics are free to drive under the influence as their heart desires, as long as they aren't harming anyone else. Such rhetoric is laughable because it is completely irrational, illogical, immoral, deadly, and sinful. Romans 1 says that God has given them over to the lusts of their hearts. They exchanged the truth of God for a lie, worshiped and served the creature rather than the Creator. For this reason, God gave them over to dishonorable passions. This city has turned its back on God and His objective moral standard. As this city once did for me, I now call you to repentance from the sin that you are openly promoting. You are drunk with blood and money. The blood is on your hands in the day of judgment. Look to the Lord Jesus Christ by faith alone, who demonstrated Himself to be God in the flesh, dying in the place of sinners, crucified under the wrath of God. Look to Him for justification alone.
Thank you very much. Chad, our next registered speaker is Chad Ringblum. Chad, are you with us?
Good morning. The word reached the King of Nineveh, and He arose from His throne, removed His robe, covered Himself in sackcloth, and sat in ashes. And He issued a proclamation and published through Nineveh, by the decree of the King and His nobles, neither man nor beast, herd nor flock, taste anything. Let them not feed or drink water, but let man and beast be covered with sackcloth, and let them call out mightily to God. Let everyone turn from His evil way and from the violence that is in His hands. Who knows? God may turn and relent from His fierce anger so that we may not perish. When God saw what they did, how they turned from their evil way, God relented of the disaster that He had said He would do to them, and He did not do it. But it displeased Jonah exceedingly, and He was angry. And He prayed to the Lord and said, "O Lord, is this not what I said when I was yet in my country? That is why I made haste to flee to Tarshish, for I knew that you were a gracious God and merciful, slow to anger, and abounding in steadfast love, and relenting from disaster. Therefore, now, O Lord, please take my life from me, for it is better for me to die than to live." And the Lord said, "Do you do well to be angry?" Here I am again. Four days after I last spoke, ordinances were introduced which make Pittsburgh a sanctuary city for gender mutilation. Four days after I called you to repentance, you doubled down on using the doctrine of the lesser magistrate in a perverse and wicked way. They've obviously since passed unanimously. Unlike Jonah, I wouldn't say that I'm angry, but I am grieved. Grieved enough that I understand why Jonah would not want to proclaim the Word of God because he knew of His mercy and would rather see justice dealt to wicked people than to see God show them mercy. It's no surprise to me that a body bent on providing shelter for abortive parents and doctors would give shelter to abusive parents and doctors. Let's face it, the two are one and the same. Let's also face this fact. These ordinances aren't about protecting rights or being welcoming, but rather they're about giving shelter to people who would prescribe drugs to children you would, who don't know any better, that you wouldn't give, that you wouldn't give to convicted pedophiles. And wantonly perform ghastly procedures that mutilate, sterilize, and give children a lifetime of dependence on medicine. It's about protecting an industry that brings in tax dollars. I implore you, repent of these vile acts. For His mercy is great enough to cover a multitude of sin. Turn to Christ. I'll finish with what God said in Jonah 4:11A, "And should I not pity Nineveh, that great city, in which there are more than 120,000 persons who do not know their right hand from their left."
Our next registered speaker is Aaron Pratt.
Good morning. I'm Aaron Pratt. I am a resident of the South Hills of Pittsburgh. Genesis, Chapter 1, verse 27, says, "God created man in His own image; in the image of God He created him; male and female He created them." At a minimum, this council has no regard for image bearers of God, nor any regard for God and His command to protect those who are most vulnerable and defenseless. Why do you think that there is so much evil in this city? Well, if we believe Scripture, we know that it is because the evil heart of man. However, with regard specifically to the City of Pittsburgh, the evil that runs rampant within it can be traced all the way back to the heart of the city, in this place where wicked decrees are established. You have no regard for God nor for His image bearers. You voted to make this city a sanctuary for the murder of babies in the wombs of their mothers through abortion. And now you voted to make this city a sanctuary for God's image bearers to mutilate their bodies in a godless manner. No wonder many citizens in this city have no regard for each other. If the city officials do not, why should they? You condone and celebrate the murder of babies in the womb and also the destruction of bodies that God so perfectly knit together. So is it a surprise when one man pulls out a weapon fully intent on lawlessly taking the life of another human being? It shouldn't be. For it is reflective of the heart of the city which passes iniquitous decrees, and the evil pumps out from the heart to the neighborhoods that surround it. Councilman Burgess, I turn my attention to you. You claim to be a minister of God who knows something about the Bible, or the book, as you called it the last time we were here. Why then are you using your seat to lead countless people down the broad road to destruction, to hell, instead of pointing them to the hope that they can find only in the gospel of Jesus Christ? I exhorte you all to repent of sin and believe in the only One whom you can find forgiveness, the Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ.
Our last registered speaker is Chief Pomai Chokmam Yehalahi.
I'm a Jack Alama Kinn, readings, love and light. My title is Chief Chokmam Yehalahi of the Air Force Confederacy of Aboriginal and American People. And I'm here today, again, to continue, to reiterate, that ignorance of the law is no excuse. And when anyone fails to honor their oath to the Constitution as municipal officers, public servants, citizens and non-citizens, upon our Aboriginal homeland called America, against our people, that act is called genocide and is punishable by death. And the Constitution for the United States of America, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, is clear, established in the Book of the A's Dictionary adapted to the Constitution, that Indians or the Aborigines of this country are so-called, and that our Indian tribe, our nations, are separate and distinct community, or body of Aboriginal Indian race of men found in the United States. And you can't find people, because we were already here, but they did meet us, your ancestors. And mind you, your ancestors called us Indians, and we accepted certain terms for communicative purposes because we had our own language. And all Indian treaties entered into prior to 1871 were consummated pursuant to Article 2, Section 2 of the United States Constitution, and Article 6, commonly referred to as the Supremacy Clause. And the Constitution and the laws of the United States, which shall be in pursuance thereof, and all treaties made, or which shall be made, under the authority of the United States, shall be the supreme law, and the judges in every state shall be bound thereby anything in the Constitution or laws of any state, to the contrary notwithstanding. And the city is under the jurisdiction of the state and federal governments. And the Supreme Court has consistently helped that Indian treaties have the same force and effect as treaties with foreign nations, and consequently are the supreme law of our land here and are binding upon state courts and state legislatures, notwithstanding state laws to the contrary. And the city is under the jurisdiction of the state and the federal governments. The Supreme Court, speaking through Chief Justice Marshall stated in part as follows, "The statute was held void since it conflicted with the Cherokee Indian Treaty," and we have a Delaware treaty here, familiarize yourself with it, "which was declared to be the supreme law of the land. And the Indian nations had always been considered a distinct, independent political communities retaining our original natural rights, as the undisputed assessors of the soil from time immemorial. And the city is under the jurisdiction of the state and federal governments." And Article 3 in the Delaware Treaty, where as the United States engaged in the just and necessary war and defense and support of liberty, life, and independence against the King of England, it was our people who assisted your people, free and safe passage through our country, so that your troops could conduct their business in the best ways, so that they could get to post the forts and towns as they fought against the enemies of the United States. And after said troops, we supplied them with corn and meat and horses, and whatever we had within our power to assist them in fighting against the tyranny that they fought against. And we assisted them. And you are failing to honor your oath to our people and these contracts that were established before you became City Council people, before you were a glimmer in your dad's eye."
Thank you very much. Is there no other registered speakers? Is there anyone before us? Anyone in the chambers that would wish us to speak?
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's in Katy, where Irving's up on the top of Beffert Avenue. Through my readings and also, well, through my readings, I have read that it was either Angelo, it was either Ma Angelo or either Toni Morrison that said, that I might not remember the exact words you said to me. I might not remember, even if you attacked me, all the things that you did to me, but I can remember how you made me feel when you did what you did. Now, in 19, in 2018, you have here, I live up in Katy, Irving's, and they have a tension Congressman Mike Doyle, representative, will be here to discuss our Social Security, SSI, VA, and other federal benefits concerning, concerns you may have. And I talked to him at that time about, we live at the top of Beffert Avenue. In order to get to the hospital at the bottom of the, bottom of the hill, we must take two buses, go through town to get down to the bottom of the hill. I talked to him at that time. But I also would say that Mr. Doyle, Representative Doyle, I thought really represented us as Black people too. And when they, then I was gonna really keep going after him, but he decided not to run for Congress again because I do believe if he had, he would have remembered that I had asked him to do, to check on the bus. 2019, here's a picture of downtown. That's when I saw the governor, and I told the governor that we have a problem. There's a conflict of interest about the Hill District. If you live on Beffert Avenue and have to go to town, two buses. Now, up in our building, we have now that we have a woman that's on our board up there that had made the decision to have a photo op with DeWitt Walton, who is our county councilman. Now, I knew she wasn't gonna take my picture, but she passed me twice. And I approached her and I said, "You brought DeWitt here. How come you didn't take my picture?" I said, "If you could have took it and just said we didn't have room but not to take my picture." She says that she was campaigning for him. Well, some other thing, but as I got off the elevator, she screamed at me. "I can vote for whoever I want to." I turned back and I told her, "It's not about voting, but there's 190 apartments in this building, and you on the committee can make the decision that only certain people can take pictures with this man. Who has disrespected us?" My time is up.
Is there any other speakers before us? Is there any other speakers before us? Seeing none, I, I'm leaving this place soon. I rarely, rarely respond to public comment, rarely. But I am leaving soon, and I have spent the 15 years very rarely crossing the division between church and state. But...
But I don't call myself a minister. My church calls me a minister. I'm the moderator of Allegheny U-Bapt Association, 120 Baptist churches call me a minister. I'm on the Board of Bishops of Allegheny County of this region, they call me a minister. I don't call myself anything. Secondly, I called it the book. The reason I call it the book is because the word Bible is translated from the Greek word Biblios, means book or books, which comes from the Greek word to Biblica, which means the books traced to the city in Phoenicia, of course, which is Gerber, also known as Bitlos. And the reason that became named, that word's word Papirus, that's where it got the Papirus from. So when I say the book, it's because I am translating it from the Latin. I don't know that I know much about the Bible, although I do speak and read Greek, in Archeon, Logos, and beginning was the word. I spend my life trying to understand it, its concepts and its precepts. Doesn't make me anything, it just makes me somebody who does love the word. With that, let's now go to the presentation of papers. Um, uh, make sure I have the right one? I don't, I do now. Presentation of papers. First of all, Mr. Coghill, before myself, who is the Chair of Human Resources. Thank you.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1955, Resolution Providing that the City of Pittsburgh enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with the Pittsburgh Event Childcare for Professional Services in connection with onsite childcare being provided to the City of Pittsburgh employees during the days the school is not in session. Additionally, offsite childcare will be provided for those attending community events sponsored by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services and providing for the payment of the costs thereof, cost not to exceed $45,000.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Mr. Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1956, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grand Funds in the Amount of $269,954.54, with a local match of $26,995.45 for the purchase of ventilation saws and fans for vehicles.
Thank you very much. There is, next is Councilwoman Gross, Mr. Coghill for Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1971, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for Costs Associated with the Charles Anderson Memorial Bridge Project, where PWSA will be responsible for paying 100% of the actual expenses involved in certain work to be described in the agreements. Bill 1957, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 351 of 2020, which authorized the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into a Memorandum of Agreement with the URA, Housing Authority of City of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania State Historic Preservation Officer and 327 NNLCL, by further authorizing an amendment or amendments to said memorandum at no cost to the city and by adding 327 NNLTC as a signatory. Bill Number 1958, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the URA of Pittsburgh and Pittsburgh Housing Development Corporation for the sale of Block 26P, Lot 185 in the 5th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, 830 Adelaide Street, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city. Bill Number 1959, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the URA of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of Block 9M, Lots 273 and 274, in the 3rd Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Bedford Avenue, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city. Bill Number 1960, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the URA of Pittsburgh and Carnegie Mellon University for the sale of Block 29A, Lots 306 and 314, also known as Parcels 2A and 9, revised in the Pittsburgh Technology Center Plan of Lots Number 2, in the 4th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Technology Drive, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city. Bill Number 1961, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the URA of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of Block 56B, Lot 326 in the 15th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Hazelwood Avenue, Council District Number 5, at no cost to the city. Bill Number 1962, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the URA of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of Block 9M, Lot 171 in the 3rd Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Ledley Street, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city. Bill Number 1963, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the URA of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of Block 56P, Lot 72A in the 15th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, 5113 Little Street, Council District Number 5, at no cost to the city. Bill 1964, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the URA of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of Block 50G, Lots 49 and 129 in the 10th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Rosetta Street and Hillcrest Street, Council District Number 9, at no cost to the city. Bill Number 1965, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the URA of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the sale of Block 9S, Lot 200 in the 3rd Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, 1843 Webster Avenue, Council District Number 6, at no cost to the city. And Bill Number 1976, Resolution Requesting the Approval of an Intermunicipal Transfer of a Liquor License from El Paso Mexican Grill Buffalo Park LLC, located at 1778 to 1780 North Highland Road, Pittsburgh, to the applicant, El Paso Mexican Grill, located at 564 Forbes Avenue, pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code.
Thank you very much. There is desire to waive the rule on Bill 1971, is such a motion.
Sumo.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. It is, it will appear on tomorrow's agenda. That takes us to the vocal, Mr. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Protem.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1966, Resolution Authorizing an Interdepartmental Transfer in the Amount of $200,000 from the Bureau of Operations within the Department of Public Works to the Bureau of Facilities within the Department of Public Works. This transfer is necessary to reimburse materials purchased from the Bureau of Facilities that were ultimately used by activities in the Bureau of Operations. Bill 1967, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with SAI Consulting Engineers, Inc., for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Engineering Phase for the Lormera Avenue Bridge, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $1,241,573.73, reimbursable at 95%. Bill 1968, Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with KCI Technologies, Inc., for Costs Associated with the 28th Street Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $972,193, an increase of $72,193 to the amount previously authorized by Resolution 558 of 2020 to add additional funding for the preliminary engineering phase of the project. Bill 1969, Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with the Wellington Power Corp. for Construction Services Associated with the CBD Signal Phase III Construction Project, providing for payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $4,107,138.23, an increase of $245,179.88 from the previously executed agreement as previously authorized by Resolution 203 of 2017, reimbursable at 80%. Bill 1970, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with CSX Transportation for Costs Associated with the Construction for the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $439,223, federally reimbursable at 95%. Bill 1972, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Allegheny Valley Railroad Company for Costs Associated with the Construction for the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $250,000, federally reimbursable at 95%. And Bill Number 1981, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Duquesne Light Company, in the Amount of $72,118.57, an emergency payment for non-contracted work on the Homewood Park Reconstruction Project.
Mr. Protem.
Yes.
I have a request from the administration to please waive the rules of counsel on Bills 1970 and 1972, so I'll make a motion reflecting that.
Okay, we'll take that one first. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There is another bill that you may not have on your agenda, Mr. Kraus, that was just, we approved to introduce it today. It also needs to be rule-aided, and so is there a motion to waive the rule on Bill 1981 and change?
Yeah, Mr. Protem, I don't have that on my agenda, so I'm sorry to apologize for missing that, but I will motion to waive the rules on Bill 1981 as well, so that it may appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda.
Thank you, and that's our fault, not your fault, Mr. Kraus, that's our fault. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you very much. They will appear on tomorrow's agenda. That takes us to Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1973, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of Two Warrants in Favor of Plaintiff Donald W. Wardorf and His Attorneys, Drexler Law, LLC, at a Cost Not to Exceed $150,000 over Two Years in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation Including Attorney's Fees and Costs in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill 1974, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Owen M. Sullivan in the Amount of $11,592.68 over One Year Relating to the Full and Final Settlement of Charges with the EEOC. And Bill 1978, Resolution Repealing an Item in Resolution Number 344 of 2018, effective date June 12, 2018, in Order to Rescind the Sale.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth and Senior Services.
No, no papers, Mr. Protem.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology.
No new papers.
Thank you very much. Takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development, my favorite committee.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1979, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Five, Traffic, Article Seven, Parking, Chapter 541, General Parking Regulations, by amending Section 541.04B, entitled Smart Loading Zones, to increase the maximum parking duration, and by revising Section 541.04C, entitled Smart Loading Zone Rates and Penalties, to include a new four-tiered pricing structure.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Kell Smith, Chair of Hearing and Policy.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1980, Resolution Repealing Resolution Number 428 of 2023, effective July 9, 2023, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Homewood Community Sports for Community Liaison Services at an Amount Not to Exceed $300,000 by repealing it in its entirety. And Bill Number 1975, Resolution Appointing Shonda McDeal as a Member of the Public Arts and Civic Design Commission with the Term to Expire January 8, 2026.
Is there a motion to approve for Shonda McDeal for the Public Arts and Civic Design Commission, unless there's a need to interview her? I don't see a need, but is there a motion to approve? Your second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We will now move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before us? Seeing none, we will now move to our next order of business. The next order of business is reports of committee for final action, starting with Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1949, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for September 20 of 2023 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1915, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,425 over One Year in Favor of Marie Barsik in Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage to Her Vehicle from an Accident with a City Police Vehicle. And Bill Number 1916, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in the Amount of $21,633.77 over One Year in Favor of Ari Fleet in Full and Final Settlement of a Claim for Damage to Their Stopped Vehicle from a City Environmental Services, we're ending it and pushing it into another stopped vehicle.
You have heard the reading and title of the bill, is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action, or in favor, the passes the bill. We'll vote aye when the name is called, those opposed will vote no, will the clerk please call for a rule?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess.
Madam Clerk, I apologize, this is Councilwoman Gross, vote aye as well.
Okay, thank you. Reverend Burgess, Protem.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Bruce A. Kraus, Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Protem.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1950, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for September 20 of 2023 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1914, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Evolve EA for Costs Associated with the Three Rivers Heritage Trail Maintenance and Management Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $145,949.72.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill, is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action, or in favor, the passes the bill. Vote aye when the name is called, those opposed will vote no, will the clerk please call for a rule?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, Protem.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1951, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for September 20 of 2023 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 2022-0270, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title Seven, Business Licensing, Article 10, Rental of Residential Housing, by amending it in its entirety, Chapter 781, Residential Housing Rental Permit Program. Bill Number 2022-0465, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Five, Traffic, Article Seven, Parking, Chapter 549, Residential Parking Permit Program, 549.08, Visitor Permits, Non-Resident Permits, so as to relate the Issuance of Residential Parking Permits for Short-Term Rentals to the Issuance of Licenses by the Department of Permits, Licenses and Inspections, authorizing the operation of short-term rentals in the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 2023-1393, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine, Zoning, Article One, Section 902.03, zoning map, by changing from R1DL, Residential Single Unit Detached Low Density District to UI, Urban Industrial District, Certain Property Roughly Bounded by Kelly Street, 5th Avenue, Frankstown Avenue, and the Allegheny Valley Railroad Brilliant Line, all in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System, 12th Ward. Bill Number 1917, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840 of 2019, effective December 20- effective December 23, 2019, as amended, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by reducing Axiom Advancement Corporation as a grant recipient and increasing Hill District CDC by $5,000 and authorizing a subsequent agreement. And Bill Number 1918. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, as amended, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by reducing Axiom Advancement Corporation as a grant recipient and increasing Hill District CDC by $8,334 and authorizing a subsequent agreement.
You've heard the title and reading of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill, Mr. Wilson?
Mr. President, thank you. Uh, on Bill 2022-270, I would like to make a motion to amend, and I can explain the amendment.
Amendment by substitution, right? Or is it just an amendment?
Hmm, just be a motion to amend.
All right, there's a motion. There's a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Conversation on the motion to amend. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, uh, in coordination with our Law Department, which I appreciate all their time, uh, in Section 781.01 and definitions, although it doesn't, uh, currently explicitly say, um, that hotels, nursing homes, and other properties are exempt. We want to put that in there. So there is a line that's added to I, which is defines rental unit. And so that, uh, the line that is added by way of this amendment is hotels, motels, nursing homes, and other properties, which are subject to permitting and inspection by the Allegheny County Health Department, uh, Housing and Community Environment Program are also exempt from this chapter. So that's it. That's it.
Any other conversation? Another conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there's nay. Thank you very much for your diligence, hard work, and insight into this issue. Is any more conversation about these bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, the passes the bill. Will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, Protemp.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nos.
Uh, the bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Takes us to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Recreation, Youth and Senior Services.
Mr. Protemp.
Thank you very much.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1952. Reported a committee on Recreation, Youth and Senior Services for September 20 of 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1940. Resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with the Outdoor Inclusion Network for the purpose of establishing a geared lending library for use in Riverview Park and the co-creation of training that prepares youth-serving organizations for outdoor camping experiences. This service is provided at no cost to the city.
You've heard the reading and title of the bills. Are there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor, the passes the bill. Will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, Protemp.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nos.
Thank you very much. The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, um, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. Protemp.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1953. Excuse me. Reported a committee on innovation, performance, asset management for September 20 of 2023 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1919. Resolution amending Resolution Number 484 of 2022, further amending Resolution Number 647 of 2021, authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections, the Director of City Planning, and the Chief of Innovation and Performance to enter into an amended professional services agreement or agreements with Building I, Inc. to purchase software and related support services that will create an interactive map for internal and public visual display of planning, permit, license, and violation data by increasing the approved amount by $79,600 for an amended total cost not to exceed $587,340 and extending the term for an additional year to cover a period of eight years.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill?